Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is June 21st, 2016. I call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
President R. Selectman Slavin, Selectman Scarsiotti, Chairman Whiteside, Clerk Titlebaum, Town Administrator Sullivan, and Town Council Bowen.
Thank you. Mr. Bowen, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Announcements, Mr. Scarsiotti?
Yeah.
No? Oh, I took it. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I took it.
Mr. Slavin?
The Relay for Life was this past weekend. It's a very successful event. It was a little lower than last year, but overall, they had as many participant groups and everything else, and it went very well. They really enjoyed the DJ they had, enough so that they're going to, for next year, schedule the event for Memorial Day because the DJ is booked up through June and July, so it will be early in the coming year. The other thing, Mr. Walton was up before the Board last week and talked about signs and et cetera. We're now in the height of what we call yard sale season, flea markets, whatever they want to call it. I want to remind everybody that utility polls do not belong to the town. They belong to private enterprises. They own those polls. You aren't supposed to put signs up in those polls, et cetera. If you have a sign on Route 6, Route 28, or Route 25, those are state rules. The state does not allow you to do that either. So again, please observe the signed bylaws. Remember that when you put a sign up, it's supposed to go up the day before, and you're supposed to remove it 24 hours after. We had some signs on for a place on Swift Beach Road. A person probably had close to 20 signs up all over town. They did not remove them after their sale was over. Thank you.
Mr. Scarsiotti?
Yes. The blessing of the fleet will happen on July the 2nd at 10:30 by the Onset Bay Association. Signups are, will be at onsetbotf@gmail.com, or you can visit the Harbor Masters office at the onset pier. You can contact them at (508) 295-7072.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum?
Just a couple. First off, Soler knows is bringing Vegas shows to onset, and the first one of the series is Friday, July 1st. Soler knows welcomes back Jimmy Mas. Doors open at 6:30, dinner at 7:00, 8 o'clock showtime. Las Vegas Legends is a musical journey through Jimmy's favorite songs by a wide variety of performers, from the classics to today's contemporary artists hot off the Las Vegas Strip over the years. Jimmy's high energy and enthusiasm is tempered only by his ultra-smooth vocals as he creates his impressions, and there will be additional shows later in the summer. Also, Main Street Madness returns for the first time in a couple of years. It starts on Friday, June 24th, from 11 till 5, and I think some of the businesses, the stores on Main Street will have some interesting promotions for people to see.
Thank you. I have none. Citizens' participation. Ms. Rose, step forward, please. Identify yourself for the record.
My name is Deborah Rose. I live in Precinct 3, and I'm here because I'm a cemetery commissioner.
I have to caution you that you can speak as a citizen, but you cannot speak as a
All right, I will speak as a citizen.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. I viewed a plan for the new purchase of land at the, for the cemetery that Mr. Menard, I believe, made, and it's quite the plan, and two of you that are sitting up saw it also, and it's quite a plan he drew. And I also, and if I'm saying something I shouldn't be, please tell me, I have concerns about, let me think, I'm not going to put this.
Yeah, good. I think I know what you're going to say, Ms. Rose. We're aware of the problem.
Okay, well, you've been aware of the problem before.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't really see results. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Ms. Slavin? We talked about the master plan last week, Mrs. Slavin.
Not the topic.
Okay. I thought I would head you off with the pass.
Thank you. Sandy Slavin, Precinct 3. You might have noticed along Main Street, most of the bump outs have been planted with plants. There's planters along Main Street and on Merchant's Way. Please stop stealing the plants.
Are you kidding?
No. All the dracinas are gone along Merchant's Way. My lanthorn is gone along Fazoli, but please leave the planters alone. It takes us five gallons of water per day per bump out to keep those things growing, but please stop taking the plants. And the next topic is the banners across Main Street.
They're down.
The question was, who has to approve the banner to go across Main Street? Because I thought it was the Wareham Village Association.
Mr. Sullivan is in charge, according to Mr. Titlebaum.
All right. We need to figure out our selectman policy. Are we going back and forth? Are we responding the next week? How are we doing this with citizens' participation?
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, I know there's supposed to be no interface for citizens.
Sorry. Okay, you're right. You're right.
For next week.
I will only make faces at you, okay?
Thank you. But for next week, can I get a clarification on the banner? Who's response, who has the final say in what's being hung across Main Street?
Well, there, yes, there are two locations. Are you asking about both locations, ma'am?
Yes, because I know
Thank you.
I know that the garden club would like to use one, but we're not sure who we go to to say approval to put a banner up.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
That was it.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the Board? And I promise I won't talk back. Okay, appointments, reappointments, interviews. Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes, to the Affordable Housing
To the Affordable Housing Trust, we have the reapplication of Stephen Sui. I move that the Board of Selectmen reappoint Stephen Sui, 11 D'Angelo Road, Wareham, Mass., to the Affordable Housing Trust, to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2018, and there was a vote last week to endorse Mr. Sui's reappointment.
Second.
Motion by Titlebaum, seconded by Slavin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. It is unanimous.
Okay, takes care of that one. Next up, we have the Bike Path Committee.
Shh, 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 back there. Not from the peanut gallery. Shh. Sorry.
This is also a reappointment for Dale Scott to Chequera Berry Lane. I move that the Board of Selectmen reappoint Dale Scott to Chequera Berry Lane, Wareham, Mass., 02571, as a member to the Bike Path Committee, to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Titlebaum, seconded by Slavin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. It is unanimous.
Okay, that takes care of the Bike Path Committee. Next up is Community and Economic Development. We have two. Let's see, this is another reappointment. I move that the Board of Selectmen reappoint Barbara Sullivan, 1 Park Street, Number 3, Wareham, Mass., 02571, as a member to the Community and Economic Development Authority, to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Titlebaum, seconded by Slavin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. It is unanimous.
And another reappointment. I move that the Board of Selectmen reappoint Rhonda Josie, 301 onset Ave., onset, Mass., 02558, as a member to the Community and Economic Development Authority, to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Titlebaum, seconded by Slavin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Thank you. It is unanimous.
Okay. And did we get this one in time? It's on the agenda.
We actually didn't, but go ahead. It's on the agenda.
Yep. Okay, we also have a reappointment for an associate member of the Conservation Commission. I move that the Board of Selectmen reappoint Alyssa Hurd, 20 Elizabeth Lane, Wareham, Mass., as an associate member of the Conservation Commission, to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2017.
Motion by Titlebaum, seconded by Scarsiotti. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. It is unanimous.
And that takes care of the reappointments.
Just for the record, I have established an office policy to help move things along and not drive our staff nuts. So, things that can wait, if they're not gotten to our staff by 6 o'clock on Wednesday, they will be put off a week. If they can't wait, we will be putting them on the agenda. But reappointments have actually held a couple up because they came in on a Thursday. So, I'm just trying to ease the burden. Titlebaum? Licenses and permits, sir?
Yes. I'm going to move that we table the approval of the six collection bin applications for planted aid. We're still waiting for the actual property owners to indicate that they want these on their premises, so the applications are not yet complete. So, rather than vote and deny, I'd rather just table them until such time as the office notifies us that we have them completed.
Motion to table, seconded by Titlebaum and Slavin. All those in favor of tabling the applications, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. It is unanimous. And a second-hand reseller's license as well as signed permits, I guess.
Yes, we have one second-hand reseller license application. This is from the Wesley United Methodist Church. They run a thrift shop. They also run a fair. And just as an aside, I was approached by a member of the church today in the YMCA pool who asked whether as a religious institution, they should be collecting the vendor fees. And I said, "Well, you could certainly make the argument under state law that they should not be," and they were very happy to hear that news as a religious organization.
But we won't be.
That we would not be collecting the vendor fees. They can collect whatever the heck they want, but, let's see. On the application itself, I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the second-hand dealer license application of the Wesley United Methodist Church, 462 Main Street, Wareham, Mass.
Second.
A motion made by Titlebaum and seconded by, I'm not sure which one of you spoke at the same time. Okay, Slavin? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. It is unanimous.
That takes care of the resellers.
Discussion and vote on Buzzards Bay Coalition, Inc., conservation restriction. Mr. Decker? Would you identify yourself for the record, sir?
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Alan Decker. I'm with the Buzzards Bay Coalition over in New Bedford, and appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you this evening. What brings me here is I am seeking your approval of two companion conservation restrictions that are proposed over privately-held property at Burgess Point. I believe you have been provided with maps of the property, the conservation restriction itself, and the fact that the Conservation Commission has met and has added its support to both of these conservation restrictions with the signing of the municipal certification. I'm happy to answer any questions you happen to have about either of these two properties, but I just will very quickly summarize that these are conservation restrictions that are on either side of an existing conserved property at Burgess Point. The Conservation Commission holds that CR on property owned by the Burgess Point Homeowners Association. This is part of the Coalition's Burgess Point project in which we will be actually acquiring the ownership of the property that's currently protected by the town, and we are adding these two wing parcels, if you will. If you look at the maps, you'll see they're on either side, one on Lydia's Island Road and one on Windship Avenue. Mr. John Deekus is the property owner in both instances, and there's to be no additional development on either of these, either of these two properties. Not that much could happen, but they are both priority habitat for rare species. They're also mapped by natural heritage as critical natural landscape, which is designation for buffer areas that help protect core habitat or priority habitat for rare species. As I said, happy to answer questions on either of them, but this evening, I'm specifically seeking your approval, and I have signature pages if you so vote for authorization. I don't want to belabor points and keep the agenda moving along, so I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Mr. Slavin, do you have any questions?
Not a real question, per se. Any access easements stay in place?
I'm sorry, any access easements stay in, well, so both properties will remain in private hands, private ownership, Mr. Deekus. We were able to negotiate with him on accompanied periodic public access, if you will. And by that, I simply mean up to four times a year, we are allowed to take a group of people on these properties for access, for observation of wildlife, or nature study and the like. There is no general public access to either property.
Thank you.
Mr. Scarsiotti?
No.
That actually was the question that I was going to ask. So, that, could you be more specific? The public access that isn't there now will remain limited, right?
It will be, it will be limited to escorted groups up to four times a year at agreed-upon in advance convenient times for both sides. That's, that's what we were able to work out with, with the, with the landowner.
Okay. And that would be road access you're talking about?
Pedestrian access. Walking groups. We're not
Across
Across the property.
Yes.
To onset bay.
Correct. You have a, no? Any other questions? Comments? We kind of look like the Three Stooges up here tonight, don't we? Or is it just me?
Considering I'm part of the three, maybe.
No, okay. Sorry.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen grant approval to the conservation restriction, John C. Deekus grantor, Buzzards Bay Coalition, Inc., grantee, 33 Lydia's Island Road, Book 26764 at page 319, Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, also known as Wareham Conservation Restriction Number 31.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Motion made by Titlebaum and seconded by Slavin for conservation restriction number 31. May I have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Unanimous.
Next one, this is a conservation restriction, grantor, John C. Deekus as trustee of the John C. Deekus 1991 Revocable Trust, grantee Buzzards Bay Coalition, Inc., property address 16 Windship Drive, Wareham, Mass., recorded a book 38290 at page 112 in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, also known as Wareham Conservation Restriction Number 32. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve this restriction.
Second, motion by Titlebaum, seconded by Scarsiotti. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Just for the record, the, our Conservation Commission has signed off on the
They have, and you've been provided with
Yeah.
Municipal certifications for both of them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know it's your practice to sign signature pages. If I may hand them up, you can
You may give them to Mr. Bowen. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We actually can copy, because we have a copy machine.
We could.
Yeah. If, if you, we actually have a copy machine.
Is there an notary clause on those?
What? It needs to be noted.
Yeah, it's a notary. I thought it was a notary clause.
Yeah. And, and I'm, I'm a notary.
Well, then
And I'm also, I also know that you're, I know your practice.
Well, if we have a notary here, why not?
Yeah, why not?
Let's get it done.
Let's do it.
Let's do it. No, let us sign it first, ten copies. Here's the Three Stooges. The Two Stooges.
Actually, weren't there four stooges?
Three.
Oh, that, no, weren't there four?
It was four total.
There were four, yeah, that's what I thought.
Corley came later.
I'm sorry.
Why do you do these things to me? Tell us today, is it 21st?
Yes. We will take a minute or two to sign our names appropriately.
Absolutely.
So that we can complete the business. Anybody care to entertain us tonight?
We're doing a good job ourselves.
The size of the properties, Ms.?
Sure.
Would you use the mic, please, sir? Thank you.
Absolutely. So, the conservation restriction that's located on Lydia's Island Road is one and a quarter acres, and the conservation restriction that will be on the property on Windship Avenue is 4.4 acres. So, talking about slightly more than five and a half acres total, in combination with the existing conservation restriction on the Homeowners Association property of 15 and a half, this is an assemblage of a little over 20 acres of conserved property there at Burgess Point on onset bay.
Does that answer your question, sir? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, you can notarize, and we're good to go.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to know, he mentioned
Go ahead, I'll repeat the question.
He mentioned one side of Lydia Island Road. Did he specifically say one side of Lydia's Island Road?
The question is whether it just includes one side of Lydia's Island Road.
It does. This particular parcel
Yeah.
Is on the south side of Lydia's Island Road.
Thank you, definitely. Thank you.
Well, Mr. O'Brien's side.
You're going to ask us if it's our free act, indeed?
I'm all set. You guys good?
Yep.
Great. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you, ma'am, you too.
Wait, she's just going to take him down to copy.
I'm back on the ground.
Jumping to liaison reports.
Let's go to liaison reports. It's clear that you
Yeah.
Having a tough night. Liaison reports. Mr. Slavin?
I was in conversation with the board and selectman, Peter Mayer. They're having a meeting, I think it's tomorrow night, not tonight. They'll be voting on who to work with us on the MBTA commuter rail, on the pilot project, so hopefully next week, I'll have some answers as to what we're going to do or how we're going to start. On legislation on special acts that we put forth to the House and Senate, we have three outstanding right now. The first one, of course, is the, using of the manufactured mobile homes included in the affordable housing statistics. That bill is buried with a bunch of other bills at the 100% inclusion. Just for facts, the town of Carver, the town of Wareham, comprise over 2,000 units out of the total of 11,000 approximately in the state. So, we represent more or less pretty much 20% of the total. I express my concerns, displeasure, whatever, in that because we represent such a large percentage, and these are home rule petitions, that I thought we should get better representation as far as how it's handled, et cetera. At the same time, Senator Pacheco does have a bill to count 50% of the total that we have. Even that would be acceptable. That's having some difficulties also, but we're, hopefully, we'll get something there. I'd be happy to take 50 at this point, because we've been trying for, I don't know, probably 12 years now and got nowhere. The other bill, which Mr. Sullivan is out, had to do with the licenses. There was some confusion at the State House, which licenses we could sit and reallocate if they were turned in, et cetera. There was three different versions of licenses that we have, if I remember right, and they weren't sure which way they wanted to go. They were also looking at previous special acts, and I believe we had a response from Mr. Sullivan, I think, yesterday after he sent a request out to the Selectmen for answers. So, hopefully, that will start to move forward. The third one has to do with the changing of the annual town meeting to both spring and fall. That just went to the House and Senate less than a month ago, and I've been told that that should be no problem, but they're pretty close to adjourning for the summer, so it probably won't see light of day until, unfortunately, the fall, as far as that goes. I met with the MOP, which is the organization that signs off on the transportation for the southeast coast region that we're in. This can be sent down to Mr. Sullivan. To report, just for public information, there is a proposed amendment, which we voted approved, had to do with GATRA, and in there, there is $41,900 for 2016 for a Wareham to the Bedford shuttle. I didn't see any details of how that's going to work yet, but it is in there. It's been approved. We also have on Paper Mill Road, the bridge that goes over the Wee Wee Annock. That's a $3 million project, which will be done in 2016. And then in 2018 and 2019, Wareham's Route 6 and 28 project is locked in as of this point. It's approximately $19 million total. It will be done over two years because of the dollar amount. If they were to do, as I said the last time around, if they would do the Wareham project all at one time, it would wipe out everybody else for the year. Another interesting piece, we basically voted all the way through to 2021, so any new projects for Wareham in particular that we propose will start at no earlier than 2022. The Middleborough Rotary, which everybody thinks doesn't affect us, but really does if you're traveling and you come out between 18 and 28 in that Route 44, it's like, it's as bad as the LA freeways all the time. You get in just before that rotary, and it backs up everywhere almost 24/7. The project was discussed a little bit today. It's only $80 million, which would basically wipe out four years' worth of road work that's allotted to the, to our region by dollars between state, federal, et cetera, which means there'd be no projects done whatsoever for four years except that. Obviously, that's a real problem, but this project goes back to the 80s. It's been floundering. We will probably meet next year at the same time again on the usual annual meeting to approve, and I know that the representative for Middleborough will basically make a motion to have the rotary done period, and it's going to be interesting because it's going to have to be some discussion on it. I believe what we're going to try and do is work with Mass. Works and other grants, federal, state, whatever, see if we can get something going. It's just been ongoing, and it's never going to get done unless we get more proactive on it. So, just give everybody a heads up that the Middleborough Rotary, which we all basically run into sooner or later, is, is up and is going to have to be worked on sooner than later. And I think that's all I've got. That's good enough for today.
Are you, would you like to look for volunteers for July 4th?
Yeah, you can mention that. Sandy, nobody came up with citizens, so
Why don't you do it?
Okay. The Wareham Historical Society is looking for volunteers to help during their Antique Sphere, which basically starts about 7 o'clock in the morning getting ready, and Sandy, at 2 o'clock or 4 o'clock? 3 o'clock?
Two for the vendors, three to clean up.
Okay.
Two for the vendors, three to clean up.
Clean up. And our organization, like a lot of others, is down to small numbers as far as people who can volunteer, and Sandy and I are probably the youngest, which is not a very good thing to say, so we can definitely use some help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slavin. Mr. Scarsiotti?
Just the blessing of the fleet on July the 2nd at 10:30. It's sponsored by the Onset Bay Association. You can sign up at onsetbotf@gmail.com or at the Wareham Harbor Masters office. You can contact the OBA at (508) 295-7072.
Thank you.
Yes, last week, I went to a cemetery commissioners' meeting that never materialized, but nonetheless, I did get an opportunity to look at the plans for the recent land act but nonetheless, I did get an opportunity to look at the plans for the recent land acquisition that's going to be part of Aguan Cemetery, and it really is a nice layout. The Director of Municipal Maintenance has done a wonderful job of parceling it out, making it so that the, the property will be attractive and accessible to people. So, I'm very proud to see that work going forward. The other thing is, a few weeks ago, the board asked me to look into doing a standardized complaint form that anybody could fill out relating to property concerns to be filed with the town administrator and then sent down to Inspectional Services for code enforcement. I've taken a look at the Board of Health form, and I think that one's pretty good. I'm going to run through it this week with Attorney Bowen. I have a couple of different ideas for it, but I should have that done and ready for the board to, to take a look at soon. And I'd also like to do a selectmen's policy relating to that, too, so that it makes this the form.
Thank you. Just want to remind everybody that next week is our last meeting until July 11th. Is that correct? 12.
Yes.
So, if you need something, get it to us now. Don't complain because we've given you fair warning. Town administrators' report.
One other item I missed, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Came up at the end of my meeting today. Metapoyce, their bike path has been put, moved back to 2018. And they will be funded for their bike path to be completed on 2018. Marion, their bike path is locked in for 2020. I got news today that Wareham with a small piece that we're doing down Minehead Ave, et cetera, Mass DOT has approved it yesterday. The letter hasn't gone out yet. So, that piece for us, which is probably a couple million dollars actually, is in place. What I'd like to do, Madam Chair, is to have the bike path people come in and talk to us about where they go from this piece on, because it's still a major piece from basically the town line of Marion coming into Wareham to meet up with what we have. And I'm more concerned about the available funds down the line because we're looking at 2021 for funds already locked in. So, basically for the Wareham bike path to continue, they don't have a chance for funds on the state level until 2022.
You could ask, that's fine, if you want to coordinate that with Mrs. Wilson.
Yeah, I just think it'd be a good idea so we know where they're going and what's happening.
Now, Mr. Sullivan, your turn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be passing out a memo regarding the appointment of the library director, and this will be sent out to the Board of Trustees as well for the Wareham Free Library. A total of nine applications were received. A search committee was established consisting of library stakeholders, the friends, trustees, foundation, employees. They went through the resumes and chose six candidates to interview. Two of the six withdrew their applications, so a total of four candidates were interviewed. The two top candidates were presented to administration for interviews. Myself and Mr. Underhill interviewed the candidates, and I am happy to announce that Mr. Michael J. Carlosi has accepted the position of the Director of the Wareham Free Library, starting salary of a little over $63,000. And the anticipated hire date is the 1st of July. Attached to this is Mr. Carlosi's resume, and I would respectfully request that the Board of Selectmen add this to the, to ratify to next week's agenda. Mr. Carlosi does have the, he's got the Masters of Library and Information Sciences from the University of Rhode Island. He is, believe it or not, he is one of our local residents, so I'm very excited to have him on board. He's currently been working at the Canton Public Library, so it'll be great to have him back, and I look forward to working with him. And I'm sure this announcement is making a whole bunch of people happy.
Great, thank you.
So, I'll hand these out. The next item is sort of a 180, and I'll be handing out a memo for your review. You know, it's, I'm not going to go into depth on this one, but probably, really, I think one of the things this board, myself, has worked on since we've, we've all come together is, is really having respect for one another. It's for being an organization that people can look up to, and frankly, just treating people in the right way. And last Wednesday, I had a meeting in my office, and afterwards, one of my employees informed me that, you know, a board member, which this, of a board that this Board of Selectmen appoints, was there literally with his ear pressed to my door, listening into the conversation, and was there for a while. It's, it's frankly one of the most disturbing things. I don't think, I really thought we were beyond these sorts of things. Frankly, it's unfortunate that I needed to waste my time and the Board of Selectmen's time with this, but as an appointee, that person represents the Board of Selectmen, and I'll respectfully request that the Board of Selectmen take any action that they deem appropriate to make sure we're, we're not subjugated to future intrusions and such immature antics. I, I, I am truly flustered by this one. I just can't believe it happened and that this is what we're dealing with. Next item up is a CETA matter. This is the CDBG grant. The Baker-Polito Administration today announced that $825,000 was awarded to the town of Wareham for, within CDBG grants. This is, they have over 28 million was awarded to 57 communities. So, this is a large award. We are a mini entitlement grant. Right now, we have it for housing rehabilitation assistance for nine units of housing, slum and blight study for onset, street design at Wareham Village, support, food pantry, homelessness prevention at risk youth, domestic violence, and transportation services. So, this is exciting. I'm glad that we got this in, and I'm looking forward to, to working with everyone as we execute this in the future. If you are looking for street banners to go across Wareham, it's the Wareham Village Association, and they are the ones that would control that. I do ask that people understand, we're very lucky. The Wareham Fire Department is doing, is doing really a wonderful service. They're the ones that are putting up the banners and taking them down for the Village Association. So, please understand that the request for them to come up and, and down may not be done as fast as people would like because as the fire department, they do have other things on their plate. So, I appreciate their, their helping out in this civic manner. The next item is something that we really, we just need to keep an eye on. I'm sure everybody knows, but it's been in the press. The, the revenue shortfall for this year is looking for, the state is looking at approximately anywhere between 450 to 750 million dollars. So, you know, that's going to affect most likely next year's aid. I know that our, that our local representative is keeping a watchful eye on this and will be, will be working in a, in a manner, trying to help the town. So, that's greatly appreciated. And again, this is, this will really affect our state aid and potentially the assessments. I know that everything's on the plate, and they're all working hard and looking at what they can do. So, this is just something to keep you advised of at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. You're all set? Nothing on the consent agenda? No bills?
No.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Title Bomb, seconded by Slavin to adjourn. So done.
If that's a direct place, all that.